Please rise if you wish for the invocation and the pledge. Dear God, tonight we are grateful for the chance to review with our auditor our financial performance last year. We seek to continue careful management of the funds we receive from our residents, the state and grant sources. We want to continue to be good stewards, using revenues to efficiently and compliantly provide the services our city needs. We are encouraged by the healthy reserves built up over the past five years of such management. These help us meet any challenges that come our way. Additionally, we ask for wisdom and guidance for our state legislators as they are halfway through this year's session. There are many ideas being floated that would have significant impact, good and bad, on our city and residents. We ask that those that would impede our ability to meet our city's needs be frustrated, and those that will aid our residents be enacted. As we consider the matters before us this evening, grant us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding that we may make the best decisions for those who have entrusted us to represent them. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This is the regular city council meeting for the month of February. City Clerk, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Sell?
Here.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Here.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Here.
Mayor Chazet?
Here.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Here.
Being the regular city council meeting for the month, we have a time for public participation for any items not on the agenda. I have a speaker card from Guy and Donna Skodman. Would you come to the podium and address the council? You have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening. As you're all aware, back in November, they started installing new power poles along properties here in DeBarry. They put a pole in our property that was 22 feet from the road. I had complained to the project manager at the time or asked him why it was so far in. He told me he would have an engineer get with me. Early in December, I'm sorry, December 14th, I got a call from a gentleman named Robbie, supposedly he's with either Duke Energy or Pike. Pike was putting the poles in, so I'm not sure. And he measured and agreed that it was past the easement by a few feet.
Okay.
So I didn't want to have him go through all the trouble of knocking it down, and I happen to live on a corner on Bonita Road. And I said, you know what, if you guys put a pole up on that thing so people can stop at the stop sign, I'd be happy with where it is. And they told me they would have to have me sign a release form for the easement. I didn't hear back from him. I just spoke with him again last week, and he said that they had put in a request to the city council to pay the fee for the light. I guess there's some kind of a nominal fee if you have a light in your yard, but it's not in my yard. It's facing the street. So that's what I'm here to find out, if anybody here has any knowledge about that. I hate to have them go ahead and move the poles since they already connected all the wires.
I'm going to let the city attorney just give you a bit of guidance. We generally do not stop and discuss the issue here. We assign it. I will direct it to the proper person. The city manager can make a few remarks and probably give you direction, and then the follow-up would be after the meeting during the business day, probably.
Okay. Would you like me to send my?
I want the city manager to say what he's getting ready to say.
Yeah, and anytime you add a street light that shines there, every additional one the city pays for, so that request may have come in. If it's not in the proper location, then we need to correct that as well. But we'll take a look at it. I got your address here. We'll take a look at it and see how we can assist you there, so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Next up on our agenda is the approval of minutes for the regular city council meeting of January 3, 2024, the city council workshop of January 17, 2024, and the special city council meeting of January 17, 2024. Do I have any motion in reference to the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for January 3, 2024, the workshop for January 17, 2024, and the special city council meeting January 17, 2024.
Second, Councilmember Butlin? Yes. Vice Mayor Butlin? Yes. Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sell?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Do we have any additions, deletions, or amendments to the agenda? Hearing none, we will move on to our presentations, and I would like to welcome Captain McKnight from the Volusia Sheriff's Office, who is over law enforcement in DeBarry. And of course, I think most of you have seen, we also have the sheriff himself. Welcome, Sheriff Chitwood. We're going to have them give us a review of the crime situation in DeBarry. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Council, City Manager. So yeah, 2023 was a good year. I was assigned here in August of this year. Took over for Lieutenant Cody Cochran, so he had the first half of the year. Came from investigations, so it's been a very good transition for me. So we'll go through a couple of the highlights from the year. So to start off, we, one of the first couple of slides we have here is we did some, let's see what we got here. The summer camp program, which was a very, very successful event. We were able to visit with 40 to 60 kids. We showed them our, obviously, our police motorcycles, our K9s, and it was a very good interaction for us with the city. Couple of photos here. That's Lieutenant Cochran, who is here. It was back in May and June. And then we had the Barry Citizens Academy, and the Citizens Academy is a very good event we can have for all the citizens to pretty much come out and experience any of the specialized units that we have. So a lot of you are familiar with it, but they go through our K9 things, bomb, SWAT. They get an experience exactly what it is we do and how we do it. It's a very good experience for anybody that wants to do it. I'm sure we'll do one later this year, so keep an eye out for that. So there's another photo of our bomb tech going over kind of what equipment we have, all the technology that we actually bring, our drone units, all the technology we've actually added to our agency in the last few years. Before I get into the significant events we've had for this year, I want to introduce the Assistant Commander with me is Lieutenant Cameron Tucker. He's going to kind of, he did pull a lot of work into the video that we're going to show, so I want to give him a chance to showcase what we did.
Hi, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, City Manager. In this short video that we have, the most important part is that it's going to illustrate some of the important work that deputies that you have here in your city experience on a day in and day out. A couple of the cases are directly tied to the events of note that we're going to talk about after the video, so that you can kind of correlate. The video has been edited and redacted. Some of it has been pulled so that the identity of the victims involved in the cases is protected, as well as some of it is, you know, viewer discretion. So it's nothing that we haven't already put out, but just wanted that to anyone that hasn't seen it, so.
An alleged peeping tom has been arrested after police say neighbors reported someone looking into their windows. You can see a man walk up to a window and stare inside in this home surveillance video. Police say this man is the suspect.
What's up, man?
A deputy approached Johnson as he was walking out from between two homes in DeBarry, Florida.
Stop right now. Where are you? Stop.
And he took off. A chase ensued. Deputies with the Volusia County Sheriff's Office used a drone to find Johnson hiding in a swampy area nearby.
Get up now!
Oh, shoot.
Get up now!
Johnson was charged with stalking, loitering, or prowling, and resisting an officer without permission.
Happening now, Volusia County deputies need your help finding this man who they say shot his girlfriend in DeBarry. 21-year-old Caleb Pagidus wanted for aggravated battery with a firearm, armed robbery, and tampering. Chapter 2 flew over that scene on Buena Vista Street near Dirksen Drive this morning. Detectives say the woman's injuries are non-life threatening.
Okay. Where's he at?
I don't know. He went the other.
He's a white guy, early twenties, got dirty blonde hair. Today, he's wearing all black. We're just checking the blocks of woods right here by his house to make sure he's not laid down right here.
Come on, we're going to come this way, okay?
Can you just walk where? Tell you when you get out, boss.
Volusia at 472 Florida Tech Tech Delta Lima Bravo four eight zero one red dot.
He's 12F going southbound on Volusia.
I think I see his taillights. Signal four here in the woods. Probably took off on foot.
Which location?
A Honor Block west of Minnesota.
Yeah, no, no, you're good, you're good. Cover that side, I got this side. Just cover that side. All right, 65 Central, vehicle clear, blood in the car. Probably took off on foot westbound.
Keep your hands up!
Keep your hands! I'm on your left.
Don't move, you understand?
You know the handcuffs? They're calling for Air One for this trauma alert.
Hey, come out of the car.
Come out of the car and do not touch that knife, you understand me? I'm telling you, do not touch that knife, sweetheart. Okay? We need to get you some help. Do not touch that knife. You understand me?
61 Central, want contact in this channel.
Step out, step out. Ma'am, I'm telling you right now, don't fucking do it. Don't do it! Don't do it!
61 Central, taser deployment.
Don't touch the knife! Don't touch the knife, you're going to get it again! Put your hands up!
Hang on, I can't, I got a really bad, two bad wrist lacerations here. I can't play handcuffs on her. Take my cuffs. Take my cuffs. Just get them out of my hand, I'll hold her.
Okay. How do you want to do it?
I'm just going to hold her until EMS gets here because she is, those are bad.
Yeah, I need someone. Hey, honey, you don't have any weapons, right? Okay. Where are you shot? Where are you shot, honey? Yeah, where are you shot? Where are you? It's in your leg? I'm going to wait till I have someone else, and we'll stabilize your leg, okay? I know, you're okay, sweetie. We're going to put this tourniquet on, okay? We have rest, you're okay. You're okay.
I got a gun on me, I said, just let me go.
I know, honey, we're going to put this.
It's going to hurt, okay?
Ready? You grab this part.
Can you grab the back of it, please?
Yep. One.
So I want to start talking about the last two portions of the video. So the very last one that you saw was a gunshot victim that was here in DeBarry. Captain McKnight, we'll talk more about the case in a moment, but I mentioned highlighting some of the work that the deputies were doing and the showcasing what they did. So in those two instances, they actually saved that person's life. So the injuries that they sustained from the gunshot, had they not received the medical aid from the deputies there on scene, the prognosis was that they weren't going to make it. So that was great work by Deputy Deedish. She was submitted for a life-saving award. And in the video just before that, where the taser deployment of the suicidal person, that was a person that we had been looking for throughout the day, that should have been somewhere in the area of DeBarry. We ended up finding her in Orange City, and although we had to unfortunately use the taser to secure her in handcuffs, it was because she was trying to take her own life. And the injuries that she sustained from that would have been fatal if not dealt with accordingly by the deputies, and they too were put in for recognition for that. So not everything that happens is solely crime-related. There's a lot of things that the deputies deal with that are more of a life-altering encounters, you know, whether it be with mentally ill persons, or children, or people who are just going through some sort of crisis in their life. So we wanted to include those as well, because it's something that we deal with pretty often in every part of our county, and it showcased a very important action that they took and actually saved their life. So I'll turn it back over to Captain McKnight.
Thanks, Lieutenant. So I just want to echo his statements. I really want to commend the deputies that we have working here, because they can transition from trying to protect our citizens here, transitioning right into a life-saving measure. I mean, we're out looking for, you know, a suicidal person that's got a knife, she tries to attack the sergeant, he has the taser, but then we quickly transitioned to trying to save her life. And same thing with the kid that got shot. He was in an area he probably shouldn't have been, but the homeowner shot him in the leg, and it was a pretty significant injury. Had she not applied that tourniquet, we'd have been having a different conversation. So I want to commend them. So switching to some of these cases, the first one we saw in the video is this case right here. He was loitering and prowling over in the Rivington Sew Division. We had a couple of different evenings that this was reported as seeing a male, and we got, Stephen Johnson was arrested by one of our sergeants when he was spotted in the area. The drones actually played a huge part in the capture of this guy. That tool that we have is invaluable. It really is. We don't have to now wait for Air One to come from to land in the time it takes them to power up, do all their pre-flight things. Deputies around here have the drones in their car, it can be up in minutes. So it is a very, very good technology we can use now. This aggravated battery we had in February, this was a domestic issue, that was the second video that you saw. Luckily, the girlfriend that was shot, even though she was shot in the chest, it was non-life threatening, and she survived. And we ended up catching him with a, it was a 24-hour manhunt for him. So great work by detectives and correlation with our deputies as well. The last case we'll talk about is the one where on 41 Cunningham. It was a suspicious person called, but the homeowner kind of overstepped by shooting this person in the woods that was walking, just walking in the wooded area, not posing a threat, and he was arrested for the shooting, and then the deputy was put in for a life-saving award. So all around, great job by the deputies that protect DeBarry. I'm going to let Lieutenant Tucker talk about our traffic unit and our traffic stats, as well as our crime stats for the year, so. Lieutenant?
So during the year of 2023, we participated in some traffic operations, some which were solely focused on the city of DeBarry, others were in different areas of the county. Two that I wanted to specifically highlight was in August, we had the traffic units throughout the county of Volusia here in DeBarry, where we focused on areas where we had received the most complaints from the citizens and had seen, you know, upticks in crashes and things of that. And it resulted in 87 citations, eight misdemeanor arrests, one felony arrest. That's a pretty good outing for us. What we did find during that operation is that most of the people that we were stopping and having to ticket for the violations, they don't live here in the city of DeBarry. They're commuting between areas of the county, whether there's a crash on I-4, or they're going from Sanford into Orange City for business or some other area, but they're not actually DeBarry residents. On New Year's Eve, we participated in a joint operation with the county where we rolled through different areas. The city of DeBarry was one of those areas throughout the entire night, not just here in the city alone, but throughout the entire night. They stopped 327 cars, they ticketed 213 people, they issued 29 criminal citations, made 28 arrests, and two of those were felonies, two were related to narcotics, and two were for DUI. So that is a pretty healthy outing, and it was a great showcase to keep everybody safe who was traveling from the special events throughout the county and the city. Next, I'm going to go over the narcotics activity for the city of DeBarry for 2023. So in 2023, 17 narcotics cases were assigned to our narcotics task force. Out of those cases, they completed three residential search warrants, and they were able to recover almost $1,500 in currency. They seized cocaine, they seized cannabis, heroin, fentanyl, methamphetamine, and other narcotics that weren't tested, more of a synthetic narcotic. They seized two firearms and recovered almost $10,000 in total narcotics in addition to the currency that they seized. I'm pretty happy with that number. That means that here in the city of DeBarry, we're not having a huge influx of narcotics problems, and that the serious drugs while all over, they're not amping up here, which we like to see. To highlight the overdose, both death and just reported overdoses, to kind of give you an overview of that, the entire county for 2023 had 238 overdose deaths. The city of DeBarry had four of those. So that's a very good number. That means that our citizens aren't the main source of that. County-wide reported overdoses was 1,556. That's where they overdosed, and through medical aid, they survived, and it was reported to us, 33 of those were in DeBarry. So that is, again, also a good number. For 2023, the deaths are down 20%. So that's county-wide. In DeBarry, we stayed even, because we had four in the year of 2022. So we didn't increase, but we didn't go down either, we stayed the same. Going now specifically into the traffic. So in 2022, the council approved to give us the extra motor position, which was staffed beginning on October 1st of 2022, and was staffed throughout the year of 2023. This played a significant role in our enforcement abilities throughout the year, and has proved to be a good asset for both the city and the sheriff's office as a whole. Throughout the year, the stops indicated with the asterisk on the right, all the numbers on the right there with the asterisk is just the city of DeBarry, but in total, they completed 8,517 traffic stops, 5,083 of which were in the city limits. Through that, they issued 4,568 tickets, 27, 12 of that was in the city, and written warnings, 22, 79, and 655 were exclusively in the city. For motor vehicle crashes, 534. Misdemeanor traffic-related charges and arrests, I'll explain what this means. So in the state of Florida, several of your traffic statutes are considered criminal misdemeanors, which result in a mandatory court appearance, but usually it's a notice to appear there on scene, and they're released with a ticket. 609 of those were completed, and 84 felony traffic-related charges and arrests. Now, out of those total numbers, only a small portion was within the city limits, because it incorporated all of the stops that we made in total. So again, with that, most of the traffic-related issues we're seeing are your commuters, not your city residents. In 2023, a major part of our crime reporting changed. So for the people who aren't familiar, we used to be under a system that was called Uniform Crime Reporting, or referred to as UCR, and it was the original crime reporting method that we had here for the city of DeBarry, which was coordinated through the federal government, the FBI, for crime statistics. They had changed that in 2022 to take effect at June 1st of 2023. So this first slide is under that old system. From January to May, we ran under that old system, and it covers homicides, auto thefts, residential burglaries, non-residential burglaries, your standard larceny, your vehicle, car brakes, larceny, shop liftings, bicycle thefts, armed robbery, strong-arm robberies, aggravated assaults and batteries, aggravated domestic assaults and batteries, persons shot, sexual battery for adult, sexual battery for children. And they compiled these to make them Part I property crimes and Part I persons crimes. On that, you can see comparison from the years before, and through the first five months of 2023, there was a total of seven burglaries, there was a total of 39 larcenies, three robberies, six aggravated assaults, one sexual battery, and a total of 65 Part I crimes. That's really, really good. That means that the crime overall here is staying low, statistically below the average. This is what it will now look like. Now we are under a program called Nibers and Fibers, and it is the new crime reporting from the FBI. And in that, as you can see, the category is much larger, so it encompasses a wider range of crime that we are required to report. And this is significantly different from what it was before, not only because there's more categories, but because of the matrix that goes into reporting it. So to give you an example, in the past, if a resident left their garage open and somebody went into their garage, and they went into that person's car, and they stole their purse, and in the purse there was a credit card, and they went to Walmart and they used it at the store, that was reported as one crime. Now, the charges in which, when we solve that case, we charge a person with, would still be there, but the crime type was just one. It would have been reported as a residential burglary. It used the hierarchy, which means the highest level of crime out of everything I listed would be what we coded it as, which would have been a burglary. Now we have to report that it is a residential burglary, that it is a vehicle burglary, that it is a theft, that it is a fraud, and then depending on how they used your credit card, it could be an identity theft as well. So now you've taken one incident, and it's now four crimes. Well, if your husband's credit card was in your purse when it was stolen, he's now a secondary victim, but he also owns the car, he also owns the house, and he's now reported under all of those same crimes. So your singular incident with two victims has now become two victims associated with eight crimes, but it's just one incident. So as you see on the bottom, where it says total group A, it says that we had 284 incidents from June 1st to December 31st. That's a significant difference from 65. Well, that's because of how we're having to report these incidents now and code them. However, 77% of all of those were cleared, which means that we solved it and it was taken care of. So again, still about the same level of cases. It's just going to look completely different on paper because of how it's being reported, but the clearance of those cases remain high and the same. So as we move forward, we'll try and point out the differences. Unfortunately, because they changed this, we're not able to give you a historical comparison to these new types of crimes, because they didn't exist before in the terms of reporting. And I'll turn it back over to Captain McKnight.
Lieutenant, that concludes our presentation here. As always, we're committed to giving you guys the best service for the citizens here, for the council, the city manager. The sheriff allows us to pretty much give us all the tools to do the best job that we can, and we're happy to do it, so.
And on behalf of the council, I want to express our appreciation for the job that's done here in DeBarry. I think that every single one of us appreciates the performance of the unit here in DeBarry. Sheriff, did you want to say a word or two?
Go ahead, thank you. It's an honor to serve the city. We'll see you tomorrow morning in Compton.
Excellent, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is a presentation by Zach Shalifor of James &amp; Moore Company. Our annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year ended September 30, 2023. Welcome, Zach.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening. Zach Shalifor, partner of James Moore &amp; Company. Do we have the PowerPoint loaded? I think it was in the pack, but I don't know. If not, okay. I think it was in the pack, but if not, oh, Liz, do you have any extra copies on you?
I don't have any.
Just in case.
I'll have them online.
Okay.
This is my phone, I have my iPhone.
All right, well, I will hit the highlights of the audit. The good news is it's The good news is it's all, it's pretty much all good news, so.
Your agenda.
Yeah, okay, perfect. So first and foremost, you know, this is our third year working with the city, so thanks as always to the council for the opportunity. A big thank you to Liz and her team as well for, you know, what's a very streamlined process. I did challenge her to say, hey, let's start things a little bit earlier this year. And did want to just highlight the fact as we, you know, get into this that, you know, I'll say here's kind of the subjective, hey, in our professional judgment, the audit opinions are clean, here are some thoughts on the numbers, but just kind of from a purely objective perspective, did want to highlight that timeliness is always a key component of financial reporting, just to make sure, number one, that it's as relevant as possible. And timeliness is kind of a reflection of, hey, do you have a high-functioning team? Of the 45 or so municipalities that we work with, the city of DeBarry is the first 9/30/23 municipality audit that James Moore &amp; Company issued this year. So did just want to highlight that as again, kind of a totally objective, black-and-white reflection of the hard work put in by your team. Additionally, in terms of, you know, good news, positive changes this year, is in the 100 or page so document, which is the second year now of the city preparing what's called an annual comprehensive financial report, is there's a series of additional items that go into this. There's a transmittal letter at the beginning that kind of paints a picture of the city. So a reader from anywhere in the country could say, hey, all right, city of DeBarry, and get just a feel for, okay, what's the city of DeBarry all about? That goes in there. There are additional supplemental schedules and budgetary comparison schedules added. And then one of my favorites is the very back or close to the back, there's the statistical section, which gives you 10 years of all sorts of historical data, both financial and non-financial. So a lot more work goes into that. And when this document is prepared, there's guidelines out there to follow for kind of a qualifying act for, as we call it. Staff submits that document to the Government Finance Officers Association for review to say, did you comply with all of the, the major terms of that program? And the city was, for the first time for last year's financial statements, awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association. So did want to highlight that as well, that in addition to being timely, the city is going above and beyond the minimum requirements to really produce more or less what would be the most comprehensive kind of annual report or financial report prepared by a So with that, you know, the statements, these are management's financial statements. There's five reports that we issue that summarize the results of the audit. The first is the audit report on page one, and this is your standard financial statement audit report, no matter what kind of entity you are. And we did issue what we call an unmodified opinion, stating that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, effectively that the numbers can be relied upon. This is the best opinion that we can issue and what you want to see in this report. The four in the back kind of reflect the, you know, how did the audit go? Did we have any findings? You know, one analogy I picked up from some schoolwork over the summer is the audit report is kind of like your diploma. The four reports in the back are the report card, effectively. So you can get a diploma with a good or a bad report card. The first one is the single audit report. Your ARPA expenditures went over the threshold for us to go in and just document, audit a compliance-focused audit. Were those funds spent in accordance with the federal regulations? We had no issues there, a clean report. The third one is we perform the audit in accordance with government auditing standards, where while we don't audit the internal controls of the city, that would be a separate engagement, we do have to consider key internal controls related to financial processes such as payroll, accounts payable, purchasing, things of that nature. If we come across any deficiencies in the design of the internal controls or any failure, you know, to follow internal controls in that testing, we would have to report those here. Also, if we had any compliance issues related to budgets, grant, debt, anything like that that impacted the financial statements, those would be disclosed here as well. We had no findings to report in this one. And then the last two are really catch-all areas that the state requires us to look at, report back on. We had no modifications or other issues to report there in those two. One of the procedures we have to perform is what's called a financial condition assessment. The state puts out a template, we key in the numbers every year to really look at, how is the city doing first from just a trend perspective, looking year over year, the last five years, as well as from a benchmark perspective to say, hey, based on similar governments as identified by the state, whether it's due to population, scope, like whether or not you have utilities, things of that nature. And we say, hey, how are you compared to generally 10 or 15 or so peers? In that, the city did rate as favorable. There's favorable, inconclusive, and unfavorable. And I always kind of say you've got to be pretty good to be favorable or really bad to be unfavorable, most fall in that inconclusive. So it's always good to say, hey, through this test as well, you did get rated as favorable. Looking at your general fund, your total fund balance went from about $13 million to a little over $15.5 million in the current year. The biggest factor there was the Main Street land deal in terms of the proceeds that came out of that to the city. So overall, a positive trend looking there. And when we look at your fund balance relative to what you spent in the current year, your unassigned plus assigned, which we look at as kind of your unrestricted available fund balance, even though you do have about $4.5 million there earmarked for fire station, an echo grant match, and other capital improvements, the theory is that that could be changed and is available with no hard restrictions. So looking at that reserve relative to what you spent, you're at about 90% or 330 or so days, just about 11 months in reserves. So a healthy level there, there's a minimum recommendation from the GFOA of two months. So over that, I always do kind of remind everyone that's a minimum recommendation when you factor in being in Florida, where we don't have a beach in DeBarry, but we are effectively coastal when it comes to hurricanes, things like that, other contingencies, COVID, other challenges, and the fact also that not having a utility or anything else where you've got this other kind of large fund with a lot of cash to borrow from, that's oftentimes what we see as a, you know, typical reason to say, hey, we don't want to be at this, you know, lower level because we don't have a bunch of cash sitting in a utility fund that we could borrow from to get through a hurricane, anything like that. So at the end of the day, a very strong, healthy level of reserves as we just go into the future. And, you know, learned a few years ago with COVID that you never know what's next when it comes to, you know, what, what event will take place that we say, hey, we're glad we've got those reserves and, and, you know, that ultimately keeps you all in a strong position going forward. I had a couple visuals on the revenue and expenses like last year, just to highlight that. Your largest, you know, sources of revenue are your, you know, various charge for services, state money, about, only about 30% is what comes in through property taxes. And on the expense side, you know, hearing from the sheriff, also with the county, most of your public safety, you know, is focused on running through the county and those contracts for about 42% of your general fund budget in this past year. A few other highlights, your ARPA funds, about $4.5 million was sitting in that fund, although it is, you know, earmarked for projects. Some of that has been spent since year end. And your other funds, about $6.7 million in fund balance. No individual negative fund balances is just kind of always something that we look at to say, hey, are there any deficits elsewhere that the general fund may have to subsidize? So no negatives there, and we do spend a lot of our time in the audit procedures to say, hey, you've got these funds with restricted dollars or committed dollars. Were those funds spent appropriately? So in looking at that, just to kind of validate the accountability and transparency over having those separate funds, we noted no issues in our testing in terms of any of those restricted dollars not being spent for the appropriate purpose when testing some of that expense activity. So that covers the highlights. I'd be more than glad to, you know, dive into anything, answer any questions, and thank you all again for the chance to be here.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions or comments by anyone on the council? Councilmember Papalardo.
I want to say thank you for spending some time this afternoon discussing the audit. I love reading through it. It's always just very positive, lots of good news in DeBarry. And special thanks to the staff as well, Liz and your team. Excellent, as always. I know how hard it is to work with the audit staff sometimes. I'm sure Zach is very demanding. And congratulations on getting in so quickly. That's very, very impressive.
Yes, very impressive.
And then finally, thank you for spending some time talking strategically with me as we are starting to approach some challenges that different entities are placing on us in the coming months. So thank you, Zach.
Thank you.
I want to say.
Vice Mayor Butlin.
Thank you to the staff. I know Zach, I try to find things to stump you and I just can't do it. So I've been unsuccessful this year, but I know a lot of work goes into it and I appreciate it getting it done so quick. I mean, we used to do this in March or April, and now we're doing it in February, and it's like, wow.
The first of February.
The first of February. So it's, it's exciting to have that. But thank you, everyone, for all your hard work. I know I see Zach everywhere, so it's good to see you, and I don't think I'll see you for a couple of weeks now. So thank you, thank you, thank you, everyone.
I haven't told her yet, but I might even challenge Liz to shoot it for January next year. I haven't dropped it on her yet, so.
She could do it, I'm sure.
Did we get a discount?
Yeah.
Is there, is it, is it a discount like on our property taxes?
Yeah.
Get it in early. Thanks again. I appreciate the completeness of the report to us and the time that we spent together. We covered a number of the aspects. And a really heartfelt thank you, Liz, to you, you and your team because DeBarry is on sound financial footing, and some of that credit goes to the city manager and the council. A lot of it goes to the fact that you are very careful and raise a flag if anybody's good intentions are off the mark. And this year's experience with the audit where we are done the first of the group of cities, and, you know, we're up at a next level of reporting from what, the way things used to be, and we have managed our reserves well, and our ARPA funds, which we were so blessed with, have been appropriately spent and recorded. It speaks so highly of your leadership in your department and the work that you do as well. So thank you. Thank you both. All right.
Mayor, can I make one comment there?
Yes, yes, city manager may also say something.
Just a comment, and we obviously thank, thank our auditors here, but also Liz and her staff, but folks don't really recognize that, you know, everything that we achieve, every projects that we do, you know, all the things that we do, Liz and her staff have to keep track of, whether it's, oh, I got to do this now, I got, I got this road I got to build, I'm getting this particular grant, this and that and everything else. As I said before, that nobody runs government-like-a-business better than DeBarry, and, and all the things that we accomplish far outweighs some of the other, other cities all around West Volusia, she has to keep track of, document it, make sure it's in the right categories. And, and a lot of things happen really fast. And so her and her staff do a very good job of being very agile and, and keeping up with city managers and city attorneys who do a lot of crazy things, so. But we really appreciate, a lot of, I might say crazy things, but we put some real difficult deals together and, and certainly she keeps track of it and makes sure it's in the right category. So thank you to Liz and her staff. I'd be remiss to say that, that, yeah, they do a great job, but, but everything that we do, she does an even better job of keeping all that straight. And so it's, it's just extraordinary. So we appreciate that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Zach. Next is a public hearing. The staff is requesting the city council approve the second reading of ordinance number 03-2024, amending the Riverside Business Planned Unit Development to add certain permitted uses, uses to the development agreement and minimum parking requirements therein. This is a quasi-judicial hearing, and after the city attorney reads the ordinance, I will outline the process.
Ordinance number 03-2024, an ordinance of the city council of the city of DeBarry, Florida, adopting an amendment to the Riverside BPUD as adopted by ordinance number 21-05, as amended by ordinance number 06-16, to hereby include additional permitted uses on the property providing for a development agreement, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Thank you. According to our quasi-judicial process, which is outlined in resolution 15-2021, the order of business is on the screen in front of you. So the next part of the process would be to swear in, I want to go through it, swear in witnesses, ex parte communications, the staff will do a presentation of up to 10 minutes, the applicant will have up to 15 minutes, supporters or anybody that are objectors, public participation will have the opportunity to speak. There will, if there is public participation, the applicant can have a rebuttal of 10 minutes plus any time saved. Then there will be deliberations, and then there will be an action. And when the, this is, as it says, quasi-judicial, it's sort of like we're sitting as judge and jury up here. And so the next slides show the kind of considerations that we have to, to take into account before we make our vote. In other words, this is not, do we like something or not like something? We have to determine how it, the application either meets the criteria set out in our code and the law or doesn't meet it. And we base our decisions on evidence that is relevant to the matter, substantial, reliable, and credible. And we may only consider the evidence that relates to the applicable criteria, and hypothetical, speculative, fearful, or emotion-based generalizations or statements are generally not sufficient to be evidence for the council's decision. So the next part of the process is the swearing in of witnesses. So if anyone here who is not a lawyer, who anticipates speaking to this matter, should stand up to be sworn in. Okay? City, city clerk?
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you. And then we have the disclosure of any ex parte communications. Councilmember Sell, do you have any ex parte to relate?
I have not spoken to either party, I guess.
Councilmember Papalardo?
None.
Councilmember Stevenson?
None.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
No.
I did, I do have one thing to mention. I did receive a, an email from one of the merchants in the, that is in this development and expressing their opinion and, and questioning certain things. I did respond, and there was no further communication. So we can move on to the staff presentation.
Good evening, Stephen Bapp, Growth Management Director. I will be giving you the staff portion of the presentation for tonight. This will be the second amendment to the Riverside Business Plan Unit Development. And as mentioned, it is, it is an approval for a major amendment to the BPUD to permit certain uses and add minimum parking requirements therein. And I will go over those requests in a moment. To fully familiarize yourself with the project location, it is on the east side of 1792 in the southern portion of our city, directly across from the, where Barwick intersects with 1792. To familiarize everybody with the location, it is indicated in the red rectangle in the center of the map. Going through the history of the BPUD, it was first adopted about 18 years ago in 2006, and is amended one time in 2016. And the amendment in 2016 was to add vehicle manufacturing of all types. On the slide, you see a list of probably about 10 uses, but there are 32 uses overall. I wanted to put up the general summary of what is currently permitted on the property. As time goes on, many, many PUDs, especially business PUDs amend with the times. The applicant has came forward and applied with the city and has seen the Development Review Committee and passed through the DRC and has had one reading with the council to amend the following language. And one, one use they wish to add are car washes and auto detailing as an accessory use to the automobile repair or automobile body shops, which are on the premise. Also, the applicant came forward and wishes to add beer and wine sales on-premise consumption as an accessory use to retail sales and services, and also to add restaurants type A, which are restaurants where customers are waited on by a waiter, the order taken, the meal prepared and brought forward. It's not a fast food or drive-through type facility. Also, along with this amendment, there will be amendments to the, along with this amendment, there will be a portion of the amendment which includes the parking requirement for the type A restaurant or any type of a restaurant, which would be put into the site, which would be one parking space required for every four seats or one for 200 square feet, and then one additional space for every employee of the largest shift. Findings of facts. every employee of the largest shift. Findings of facts are listed here. As I stated, the DRC did review this and finds it compliant and consistent and compatible with the city of DeBarry's Land Development Code and also has also found it consistent with the comprehensive plan and has no objections to this amendment as presented. Thus, staff recommends that the city council adopt ordinance number 03-2024 for the Riverside BPUD. Thank you.
Okay. And then we will hear from the applicant.
Good evening. Joey Posey, 420 South Nova, attorney for the landowners. And the only thing I would like to add from the last hearing is that, and I don't think Stephen touched on it in his presentation, but there's a lot of other limitations in the PD dealing with the sale of beer and wine when it comes to the accessory nature. So, it doesn't grow into something different than what was intended. So, other than that, we're available for questions and I yield my time and also say you guys are very generous with how much time you give applicants, so.
City clerk, do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay. So, we will move to council questions and comments and then eventual council action. Councilmember Sell, any questions or comments?
This is really the second reading, so I don't have any questions or comments.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Just I agree with the staff's finding of facts and agree the proposal seems conforming.
Okay. Councilmember Stevenson?
No additional questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
No additional. Thank you.
I have only one point of clarification that I thought I heard in the first hearing and I just think might be good for whoever's watching. When we talk about accessory uses, those uses are limited to a certain percentage of the enterprise. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct. And that would also mean it cannot be a standalone use. It would have to be accessory to a retail sales and service. So, you couldn't just have a beer joint or type activity.
And we don't have another full car wash?
Correct.
Okay. Is it like 10% of the, 10% or some percentage of the enterprise that can be the accessory use? Or is it different for different accessory uses?
It's different for different accessory uses. There's not a specific percentage in the Land Development Code, but there are languages that define the difference between a primary use and accessory use. An accessory use cannot exist on its own as a primary. There's not a percentage. Like 10% of the square footage can be beer and wine sales. No.
Or revenues or whatever.
Or 10% of the revenues. Correct. There's not a, the state of Florida does have different lines for alcohol types and on premise, off premise, hard alcohol, beer and wine, and they define that as the state licensing agency.
And so, the auto shop also couldn't have, like, three quarters of the business be car washed?
Yeah, correct. And that would exceed and move into the, become the primary use. You know, if it exceeds probably like a 50% threshold and definitely would be, you know.
I just, I wanted some clarification because I thought we had a little more parameters when we discussed it the first time. And anyone that's watching and only seeing the second time, I wanted to be clear on that.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there any further discussion or I would entertain a motion?
Move to approve ordinance 03-2024, a proposed major BPUD amendment to amend the DA to permit the proposed uses and new minimum parking requirements.
Second.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Sell?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
And I am a yes. The next item on our agenda, number six, the Parks and Recreation Department is requesting the city council approve the first reading of ordinance number 04-2024 prohibiting smoking and vaping in city parks and facilities.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jason Scheitz here, your Parks and Recreation Director. And yes, we are here today to approve ordinance 04-2024 prohibiting smoking, vaping in city parks and facilities. So, a new state statute was recently passed that allows us to now enforce no smoking in our parks. However, when it comes to enforcement, we're not allowed to regulate unfiltered cigars. So, that was part of the state statute. That's why you see that in the ordinance and we can't get any stricter on that matter. So, in the past, we've always recommended that smoking happen in certain areas in parks, generally the parking lot. But this ordinance will allow us to ban it other than what I just mentioned. We do have issues here and there, especially with used sports games in the seating area. Sometimes it happens, sometimes around playgrounds. And that's really the intent of this ordinance is to prohibit that and stay smoke-free in those types of gathering areas. So, with that being said, do I need to read it? Or Turner, are you gonna read it? Yep.
Happy to read it.
Reading the ordinance. Yes, we do want to read the ordinance.
Yes. Ordinance 04-2024, as I understand, that's the proper number, and ordinance of the city of DeBarry, Florida, adding Article Roman 5 to Chapter 36 of the DeBarry Code of Ordinances to establish Section 36-60 prohibiting smoking and vaping in city recreational parks and facilities, providing for exceptions and enforcement, and providing for definitions, codification, inconsistency, severability, and an effective date.
Okay. Do we have any public participation, city clerk?
No, ma'am, we do not.
All right. Questions and comments? Councilmember Sell?
A couple.
Okay.
This is not something that the city of DeBarry came up with. And this was really a head scratcher. I mean, some folks will say a cigar is probably the most offensive thing that there is out there. I could actually see this causing a lot of problems at the Little League baseball games and things where you're gonna have people pointing out that you can't smoke a cigarette and the guy next to them is smoking a cigar and, you know, sheriff's department now gets involved and people getting escorted off the property. I just, I don't know. This one just, it just doesn't come across right. And I know it's not something we did or we created, but now it's in our lap, so we have to deal with it. So, I wish you good luck, Jason. Thank you.
Yes, so remember, it's always been allowed. We've never really, we haven't really had big problems with cigars, honestly. It's more so the vaping more than anything and then sometimes cigarettes. But yeah, we do get it every so often. So, if somebody really wanted to push that ticket, there's not a whole lot we could do other than recommend certain parts of the facility.
Councilmember Papalardo?
So, I wish we could ban all of it, especially as we get into Alexander Island thoughts, because I don't want to see refuse of that style or the risk of embers or any of that in Alexander Island. Not to mention, when we talk about ballparks with children, there's no reason to have smoke of any kind there. I think that's very inappropriate. So, if any of our state representatives are listening to us, I would love to chat with you.
Councilmember Stevenson?
I'm glad to hear that this really isn't too big of a problem in our city. And when I spoke to the city manager earlier, he said we were following the state wording on this. So, again, I'd have to agree with my colleagues, allowing cigars is kind of odd, but I hope it doesn't become a problem and I'm fine with this.
Mayor, just as she brought it up here, the Florida statute says, obviously, that we can further restrict the smoking within boundaries of public beaches and public parks that they own, except that they may not further restrict the smoking of unfiltered cigars. And so, it's specifically in the statute there, so.
But we can regulate filtered cigars.
Yes. So, any filtered cigars, we can examine.
How many filtered cigars have you seen? Vice Mayor Butlin?
Just a couple of quick questions, Jason. Are we putting signs up? Are we just gonna pass this and leave it?
Yeah. So, we'll address that in the budgeting sessions. Yeah, we're gonna put it for additional.
And then if there's a designated area, I'm assuming there'll be a receptacle, so they're not all over parking lots or?
Correct, yeah. When it comes to, we're not gonna put the whole cigar issue front and center, so it's not gonna say no smoking, but you can't smoke cigars. What a lot of, a few of the municipalities have brought up that they're doing with their signage is they're putting QR codes on them that lead directly to the statute or the ordinance. So, we'll probably frame it like that and then, you know, provide that area in the parking lot if they need to.
That's it for me.
Okay. I think that this is a step forward. The cigars, I don't think from observation have been a big deal. It is the state statute. It's not our call. I think the QR code on the signage is a very good idea. It takes it to the language and it gets us out of, you know, it's not something we sat up here and ginned up ourselves. And I do support not having secondhand smoke around children and other people who are working out and doing strenuous things. I think it's not good. And I'm happy to have the parks smoke-free by and large. Any further discussion? Then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 04-2024 prohibiting smoking and vaping in city parks and facilities.
Second.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sell?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
And I am a yes. The next item is another Parks and Rec Department request. Did the city council approve the first reading of ordinance number 05-2024, providing for trespass warning procedures and an appeal process? City attorney, would you read the ordinance, please?
Yes, Mayor. Ordinance number 05-2024 and ordinance of the city of DeBarry, Florida, amending the city's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 36, offenses and miscellaneous provisions to include new Article Roman 4 trespass warnings on public properties, providing for trespass warning procedures and an appeal process, providing for regulations, ancillary and incidental thereto, and providing for conflicts, severability, codification, and an effective date.
Thank you.
Jason Scheitz, again, your Parks and Recreation Director here at the city. Yes, so, ordinance 05-2024 is to provide those procedures for trespassing citations. Now, this would apply citywide. However, a lot of times, unfortunately, it does happen within our parks or rec facilities. This isn't something that we deal with on a regular basis, but over the past couple of years, we've had issues and have had to issue a few citations of this matter. And it was brought to our attention from the sheriff's office that whether it's been recent legislation or precedents that's been set in the court, that when people challenge these types of citations, that if there's no procedures or policies in place for them, then they can't be issued, can't be enforced. So, that's why we're doing that here today. And then, you know, with your approval, we'll have that backing when, you know, issues do occur that we'll be able to trespass them out of the facility.
Okay. City clerk, do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, we do not.
All right. Questions or comments? Councilmember Sell?
Do we have any language in there where they have to finish smoking their cigar first?
Yeah, not in this one, no.
Sorry.
Councilmember Papalardo?
No questions.
Councilmember Stevenson?
No questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
No questions.
I don't have any particular questions. I do think that it is just good form for us to have a procedure for appeal and an ordinance on which the sheriff can depend so that we can, you know, timely, efficiently, and without major challenge trespass people, largely from our parks, because we have not had too many occasions, mercifully, where we had to do it here at city hall or other city properties. But should we get such an unusual circumstance, we would be on sound ground to do so. So, if there's any further discussion, hearing none, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the first reading of ordinance number 05-2024, providing for trespass warning procedures and an appeal process.
Second.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sell?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Next item is under new business. Staff is requesting the city council approve the Kimley Horn Task Order in the amount of $26,500 to implement a motorized vessel exclusion zone at Alexander Island.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Richard Villenior, DeBarry Senior Engineer. So, the purpose of this exclusion zone is to provide a non-motorized contained area for the reserved use of the existing beach and as well as the other amenities such as the kayak launch and the fishing pier. Some of the considerations for the exclusion zone is that it will involve a number of federal agencies and state agencies to accomplish this approval. Initial development phases of the park facilities are expected to reach implementation roughly around the same time. So, with all these agencies involved, we're expecting a full year of just back and forth with the permitting agencies. By that time, we should be ready to also move on the first phase of the park development. So, it's kind of timing both of that together. The total coastline that's being considered for this exclusion zone is about 1,000 linear feet of the total 8,400 linear feet. So, it's only that small portion that's adjacent to the actual upland portion of the park itself. The exclusion zone, it's really for the intent of avoiding potential conflicts between the motorized uses as well as the pedestrian use of this space. And that's kind of following standard practices by other beach communities, including Volusia County and others. Openings in the barrier are expected, obviously, for emergency purposes. And then those uses are obviously, are allowed and motorized for emergency situations, but also to allow for any human-powered device to go in and out of that barrier as well. The funding for this will be coming from the Parks and Rec Administrative Contracted Services Budget. And I did happen to share that with Jason before he came up. So, the recommendation is that the city council approve the Kimley Horn Task Order to implement the motorized vessel exclusion zone in the amount of $26,500 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Implementation would be effective upon approval of this item. And any questions?
City clerk, do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Councilmember Sell, questions or comments?
I don't know if you have the answer to this or not. I'm assuming we're gonna put up some type of barrier. How does that work to allow small watercraft that's not powered out, but prevent somebody with, say, a trolling motor on the front of their boat? So, they're not under power. They're using an electric motor. How are we gonna prevent them from getting in?
Well, obviously, it's gonna be an impossible task to leave open spaces and then prevent 100% of access of motorized uses. The idea is to also mimic other areas that have done it where signage is provided at those openings for purposes of notifying you cannot come into this space with a motorized use, but also allowing the exit and reentry of those that are human-powered, such as surfboards or that sort of thing, paddle boards, I guess. You know, up here are some examples that we're looking at, but this in no way is gonna be the final or the actual systems used. But they will be interconnected, or at least that's what we expect. But once, going through all these agencies, we'll soon find out what is and is not allowed.
Thank you.
Just one more comment. The trolling motor is a motorized vehicle, so even if it's a boat that's using a trolling motor, it is a motorized vehicle and not allowed in this particular area enforcement, obviously, with either FWC or the sheriff department, there will be, there are fines and just like any traffic violation, there'll be traffic violations involved.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Thank you for adding perspective that this is a serious undertaking. There are many agencies involved. And you should recognize that regulating water is very demanding. But this is the one item that has given me the most anxiety about Alexander Island between the one-off occasions where motorized vessels are coming up anyway, whether they should be there or not. But I also think this is an absolutely critical part of this project to be able to enforce that this is a pedestrian and pedestrian-adjacent area. And it's just such a high importance as far as safety is concerned at the park. So, I'm very glad to see that we're making steps towards that happening. Thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes, I'm glad that we're working towards this because I also feel this is integral to residents being able to enjoy without motorized vehicles in the area. I look forward to seeing the engineering plan.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
I wish you could put it up there now, just to start warning people that they're not gonna be able to do what they're doing now. And what they're doing now is pretty much illegal, much illegal, but they don't think it is. So if you're listening out there and you're in our property, stay away. I think this is a good thing, and I'm glad that we're taking precautions right now to try and resolve those issues.
I do believe that it's good to engage Kimley Horn to undertake this. It's multiple agencies. It's a difficult thing to get through all of the hurdles. It's not a strength that we have in staff that can dedicate the kind of time to doing it, and it does need to start now, because we need to have an area where we're not putting people in kayaks who are jockeying with motor boats. I feel strongly that this protected area is needed for the public enjoyment of the non-motorized amenities that we anticipate having there. And the motorized boats have another mile-plus of shoreline that is not going to be protected in this manner, and they can do whatever is legal in those areas. So I think this is a good approach and that it's timely to begin it now. City Manager?
May I add a few things? And just for clarification, this exclusion zone will not affect the main channel of the river.
Correct.
And so I just want to make that clear, that this would not prevent those from occurring. Two, it matches our vision for this particular park. We have no intention of making this a boat park. Up the river here from here is an area called, and they call it Redneck Beach, and that is totally dominated by boats, and that's not the intent for our particular here. Boats can certainly, on the 1.6 miles around the berm, can attach, obviously, to the boardwalk and come up into the park, but as far as the uplands are concerned and everything else, this is more for residents, pedestrians, to be able to sit on the beach, enjoy the beach from the land, rather than become a boat park. It's a pedestrian park. And so it matches what our vision is for this particular park, and I just want to make it clear that it doesn't affect the main channel, does not affect the main channel of the river, and that's what we're proposing.
And I do think that the agencies would not permit us to interfere with the main channel, and rightfully so. This diagram shows that there is, the dotted line shows that vessels can go that way, but they can also come straight down outside the red line and down the river. That's easily navigable, it's used all the time. Councilmember Sell?
Just be careful with the wording of "our" property and stay off, it's public land. It was purchased with public funds, so it's public.
Yes, and so was the City Hall, but we don't have it open 24/7 for
I understand.
marauding.
Just reminder that it was bought with public funds.
Yes.
Yes, but it's the motor vehicles that we're stopping, not the people.
Yep, exactly. Okay, if there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Kimley Horn Task Order in the amount of $26,500 to implement a motorized vessel exclusion zone, MVEZ, at Alexander Island.
Second.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sell?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Next on our agenda is a staff request for the city council to approve Neil Schaefer Task Order to Perform the Lake Monitoring Program for Fiscal Year 2023 to 2024 in the amount of $55,637.
And I am presenting this also, Richard Villenior, DeBery Senior Engineer. I'm glad you caught that, Mayor, is the wrong you're on here?
Yes.
And the main point of this is part of our emergency pumping permitting requirements that we have to perpetually do these lake monitoring analyses. This task order is applicable for the final quarter in 2023 through the third quarter of 2024, ending in September 30th of this year. Neil Schaefer, Our Environmental Research and Design, Inc., through, I'm sorry, Environmental Research and Design, Inc., will prepare a quarterly summary report for the city. Neil Schaefer will submit the final annual report to St. John's. They've been doing these for us over the last two years, two reporting periods. So the current proposal does reflect a slight increase from last year, but still well under budget. The funding for this will be from our Stormwater Fund budget, budgeted at $70,000, but this contract is $455,637. And again, it will be retroactively from the third quarter of last year through the third quarter of this year. The recommendation is to, that the city council approve the Neil Schaefer Task Order for Lake Monitoring Services for the fiscal year 2023-24 in an amount of $55,637 and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement, and then this will be also effective retroactively from October 1st, 2023.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Councilmember Sell, questions or comments?
No comments.
Councilmember Papalardo?
No comments.
Councilmember Stevenson?
I was just curious, when was our last report from them? Do they come in and do a presentation like our auditing does?
They don't come in and do a presentation. I'd be glad to provide you that latest report. There's no, everything's in compliance with St. John's, and so there's been no comment from St. John's, so.
Okay.
If there was any deficiencies, we would certainly notify you and fix whatever deficiencies that St. John's has. So, so far, so good for the last few years. All of our reports have been very good, so.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
No comments.
And I don't have any comments either. This is a task that we need to fund every year, and it's budgeted.
I'll make a motion to approve the Neil Schaefer, Inc. Task Order to Perform the Lake Monitoring Program for the fiscal year 2023-24 in the amount of $55,635 and allowing the city manager to execute the agreement.
I'm sorry, what was the amount there?
Second.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sell?
Yes.
And I am a yes. Item number 10, the staff is requesting the city council approve the construction contract with DSR Construction for the construction of the Connector Trail, Segment 2, from Sunrail to the Gemini Springs Trail, in the amount of $179,555.34, and approve Supplement 2 of the Joint Partnership Agreement with FDOT as amended to match the low bid amount.
Presenting again, Richard Villenior, DeBery City Engineer. We'll try to keep these requests shorter. The purpose of this is, if I can say, to finally construct and complete the trail connection to the Gemini Springs Trail, also known as the Coast to Coast Trail. DSR was the lowest responsive bid that we received. The JPA Supplement 1, as approved in Resolution 2023-20, was modified from $114,421 to $179,556 to match the actual contractor proposal. The city, in this case, we do have the in-house capability, so we will be providing the construction engineering inspection services for this contract. Direct connection to Gemini Springs will now be provided or available, accessible from the Integra Apartments Development, for about 417 linear feet, 12-foot wide trail extension to the existing Gemini Springs Trail. All work has been reviewed and approved by DOT, Volusia County, and Duke Energy. The funding will be a reimbursable amount of $179,556, as identified in this Supplement 2, being approved today. The DSR Construction, Inc. Proposal for $179,555.34, plus 5% contingency, $9,000, rounding to near $1,000, for a total of $188,555.34. The recommendation is the city council approve the Segment 2 Connector Trail Construction Contract from DSR Construction, Inc. in the amount of $179,555.34. Also approve the 5% contingency budget for unforeseen conditions during construction in the amount of $9,000, and approve Supplement 2 of the Joint Partnership Agreement with DOT and authorize the city manager to execute the agreements. The implementation, effective upon council approval, the city will proceed with scheduling pre-construction meeting. Project completion is expected at 60 days after notice to proceed.
Thank you. City Clerk, do we have any public participation?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay. Councilmember Sell, questions or comments?
So this will be completed and be little to no cost to the city?
Correct. We will spend the money and then get reimbursed by the FDOT.
I like to center that.
Councilmember Papalardo?
For the Trail Capital, I hope no one forgets that.
Councilmember Stevenson?
I'm looking forward to seeing this connection made.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
It's about time, yeah. It's been a while. No, I have no other comments, thank you.
No, I have no additional comments either. I would entertain a motion.
It's going to be a long one, I think. I'll make a motion to approve the Segment 2 Connector Trail Construction Contract for the DSR Construction, Inc. in the amount of $179,555.34, with a 5% contingency budget for unforeseen conditions during construction in the amount of about $9,000. Supplement 2 of the joint agreement, the Joint Partnership Agreement with FDOT, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreements.
Second.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Yes.
Councilmember Papalardo?
Yes.
Councilmember Sell?
Yes.
And I am a yes. This is the last agenda item, and we move on to member reports. Councilmember Sell?
Nothing to add to this, though.
Councilmember Papalardo?
So I don't want to take anyone's thunder away, but we did a lot of stuff recently.
Go ahead.
Corey Mills' recognition of his nominations for military academies was incredible. They broke the news to a few of the appointees on the spot. That was
That was awesome.
so cool. Main Street Groundbreaking, Sharon Staff, as usual, did an incredible job. The Clayton on the Cookies were a hit with everybody. Yesterday, we got to attend Governor Santas' press conference on spring and manatee protections at Blue Springs, very cool experience there. And then, there are so many manatees out there. Go check out the manatees. Don't forget about the Gateway Youth Festival of the Arts on the 17th Saturday, I think it starts around 10:00 a.m. And then, for the city manager, could we have an update on any projects? I know it's more of a county project, but we're kind of involved. Donald E. Smith Trails Connector Segment?
I can do it during my
That'd be excellent, thank you.
Councilmember Stevenson?
Just to echo, yeah, we've been busy. The Main Street Groundbreaking was great, and we also went, a few of us, to the Safety Town down at Florida Public Utilities. Glad to have them here and improving the safety for anybody who's using natural gas and the first responders as well, so, thank you.
Vice Mayor Butlin?
Okay. It's been a while since we've met, so I went to the DeLand Area Chamber of Commerce, and Shari spoke to the economic panel there and raved about how great DeBery is, and they're all jealous, they're still going to be jealous, they'll be jealous forever, which is great. I also got to read, and I forgot to bring my envelope full of thank yous, at the DeBery Elementary Reading Program. I read to the kindergartners and third graders, so that was kind of fun. I also attended the Corey Mills and the Groundbreaking, and I attended Volusia League of Cities Dinner in Lake Helen, which I was reinstalled as a board member. And of course, I went to Tallahassee, which I don't know if that's good or bad. Still, I'm undecided at that point right now, but I think I'm addicted. I've been watching the Florida Channel just to try and catch up on some of these bills. It is crazy, and I would like Shari to update us at some point to what's still pending or going, maybe, you know, in the next meeting, but it was a good experience. I would definitely do it in a heartbeat. I want to go back there and smack some of them upside the head, but I can't do that because they're not my child, so. And then, of course, Governor DeSantis yesterday, so it's all good stuff. Thank you.
Well, I have most of the same things on the list as many of you were with. I will be at ComStat tomorrow morning, following up on the good report for the last fiscal year or the last calendar year. And I also did attend with the head of Parks and Rec and the city manager, the Echo Advisory Committee Meeting, where they were determining eligibility of projects. It was a lengthy and sometimes passionate meeting, and there was not unanimity that our project met the eligibility criteria, but it was a draw. And so our project continues through the process, and I will be back to observe at least the meeting where they decide whether it can be an extraordinary grant. I'm not sure that there's participation at that meeting. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the Spring to Spring Trail along Donald Smith Boulevard, we just received the 90% plans from this week, actually, last week or this week. Funding is due on July 1, 2024. Some of the location of the trail have been slightly moved, simply because we're trying to save all the trees we possibly can. The portion around the water treatment plant, heading from there is going to be along the road to save those trees for sight, and then it'll curve back in. We will, Volusia County is in process of doing the legal descriptions and the surveys for the easements from West Ridge, and so once I get those legal descriptions from the county, then we'll be able to send those over to the Rest Ridge HOA for execution. And then, construction will begin July 1, 2024. The funding will go to the county, the county will do the construction. Really, we're just kind of giving feedback to the county as they're doing all the engineering and everything else. It is a $2.1 or $2.2 million project, and so it's a major project to get all the way down there, so we'd be glad to share alignment, but that northern portion there from the water treatment plant further down is actually going to be adjacent to the road to save those trees, and we think that's more important than trying to cut all those down and then just for the trail's sake. And so, yeah, it's going to be along the road for a little while, and it's going to meander in back and forth. You will see about two or three locations where it comes back to the road. Some of that is due to the sinkholes that are on that particular property, et cetera, et cetera, but it, I think it'd be fantastic to be able to get the folks off the sidewalk, and they'll have continuous path all the way down, so. Okay? Just to kind of brief you all on some other issues that we've spoken here publicly. Regarding Hickory Stick, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on that. They have St. John's Water Management District, and the DeBery Plantation Community Association has entered into agreement for a consent order to fix Hickory Stick. That was done on January the 18th. I just got the copy today, so I do have the executed agreement. They have 30 days to apply for a permit, which is sometime by February the 18th, and then they have 150 days to complete the project, which would be about July 18th. And so they're in an agreement with St. John's Water Management District, so they do have the obligation to have accepted responsibility and are moving forward with Hickory Stick. There was a lot of work that City Attorney Kurt Arteman, who's done for the last several years, and finally got moving that issue forward, so we really appreciate all his work on that and his staff's work as well. Palm Drive, we expect, it's on the St. John's Water Management District's agenda for February the 13th, is to approve the perpetual easement, and so we expect that to go through. So I'll let you know when that gets approved, and then the last step would be the county to kind of approve everything and transfer the 2.17 acres to the city. Then the city will transfer everything except for the right-of-way and the trail, and so. And that trail that you saw there, the developer is responsible to build Segment 1 of the trail from 1792 to the Integra. You did that in the exchange agreement when we approved that during the summer. I would be remiss, since Kurt Arteman is here in person, he missed our Main Street celebration.
Incredible.
And so I do want to publicly tell him thank you, and Mark Ayers as well, for all the work they've done with the Main Street project. As I said in my presentation, their Main Street there, I make a lot of complicated and complex calls to them. They don't ever hang up in my face. They listen, they work with us, and they create these magical legal documents to get us where we need to go. And so if it wasn't for Kurt Arteman and Mark Ayers, and I do want to tell them personally, this project would have never happened. this project would have never happened. And so thank you. The joint market agreement, I think is going to be a standard because I get calls all the time about how did you assemble all these properties without any money? And that joint market agreement was so well done that it enabled us to maintain that partnership for four years. And so it serves as a standard. So as I told all the folks that attended, that Fishback Law Firm, Kurt Arteman and Mark Ayers are the best in the business, and we're so fortunate to have him and them work with us for the last 23 years. And so, yeah, I'd be remiss not to thank him personally and in person when he's here. So certainly, the Main Street project would not go anywhere if it wasn't for Fishback Law Firm and Kurt Arteman and Mark Ayers for all the work they did to solve all the problems that a crazy city manager presents. So thank you, Kurt.
Is that it?
Yep.
No? Thank you. My gosh, I never get kind of compliments like that. It's always, why don't you have the agreement yet, Kurt? What the heck about this? No, I think, you know, any agreement is only as good as the people behind it. I mean, you can have the best agreement in the world, it really doesn't make a difference if you don't have the people. So Carmen did a yeoman's job. We gave him advice and options, and he made some good decisions, and you all made the right decisions to make it happen too. So kudos all the way around. Anyway, that's it. Thanks.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Sell.
Carmen, in a future meeting, not tonight, could you give us an update on Septic to Sewer?
I can give you an update now. Septic to Sewer, the county applied for a state appropriation from the last legislative session. They got $1.4 million to do the engineering for Phase 1, which is around the vistas, and they're going to start there. It's about 700 homes. Best I know, they've gone out for RFQ or RFP for that engineering. You can anticipate the engineering take anywhere from 12 to 18 months, and that's just the engineering. So we're looking at probably the summer of 2025, and then they're going to have to go seek a $25 million grant for Phase 1. And so we'll see what happens then, whether they go to the Florida Legislature, whether they go to FDEP for that particular grant for $25 million. Or they can certainly borrow the money from the RSF Fund, which is typically for utilities, and they'll pay low interest rates on those. So they have a number of different options where to get that funding, but I anticipate them going to the FDEP to try to get that grant funding, and hopefully, they'll get it. So in the summer of 2025, when that engineering is done, we'll have the specifics about where everything's going to be located. That will give us time for the 2026 legislative session. We plan on going to the Florida Legislature ourselves as a city to ask for the $5,000 per resident, which is $3.5 million. And so at the same time they're applying for the $25 million or more grant money to construct, we'll be looking at the $3.5 million to provide grants for the $5,000 for each resident. And so, again, it's an extremely long process. The Septic to Sewer program is going to take 15 years to get done, and I think they made it clear when they're going through that, that people didn't realize it'll take that long. But it's one step at a time. It's a lot of money. We hope that FDEP, the governor has been providing a lot of money for water quality and keeping our springs, as he said yesterday. And so that's really important. But again, until they actually apply for that particular grant and get it, they'll have the engineering, but when it gets to construction, it's all going to depend on whether or not they get the funding. And so putting the first shovel in the ground will probably sometime the first quarter of 2026 or the summer of 2026. And so we're still a good ways off yet, at least two years off yet, from getting some construction done and that. And that's the latest status that I have.
Anything further? Hearing nothing additional, we stand adjourned.